School Board Meeting, West Tonka Schools to Order. If everybody could join me and stand in the Pledge of Allegiance here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own. Thank you. I move for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements, Facilities Committee Meeting, February 22nd, 7:00 a.m. And next, the School Board Meeting is March 13th. Policy Committee Meeting to be decided. And I'll be meeting right here. At this point, if there are members of the public that would like to address, do you want to come up here?
Sure.
Okay. Please state your name for us, please.
Phil Bellser. I live at 3232 Glassstone and Mound. So the reason I wanted to come here tonight is to just get a better understanding of the agreement that West Tonka Schools has with the Thaler Ice Arena being on the school land. So I have a couple of young guys in hockey, a nine-year-old and an 11-year-old, and we've been traveling around the state and around the area. And when we go to other arenas, I find that the student athletes and former student athletes are really celebrated with a lot of other high schools and associations. And my disappointment is that I've been told over the years that the Thaler Ice Arena is this privately-held corporation and that they're separate from the school and all this kind of explanation. And I want to get a better understanding of why the hockey team doesn't have a better relationship with that organization and why we don't, one, we don't have these huge banners up of our seniors. Like, you go to every arena around, they have huge banners up of the kids, their entire senior season, celebrating them and the time that they put forth. And then also, you've got a lot of kids that have gone on to play hockey at the next level. And you go, like, we were just at Maple Grove last night, and they have just little plaques that show the kids that have gone on to bigger and better things, and they celebrate them. And we don't do that. And it's really disappointing that, as an organization that's growing, that we don't have that showcase out there for people when they come into our arena. And I consider that our arena at West Tonka. I don't, I guess, I just want an understanding of why we, as a school, don't have more say in that building over there. That's my question. I know I may not get an answer tonight, but I just, I want my kids, when they're this big, to have something up there on the wall, other than just their little team picture.
So, first of all, thanks for coming in, and also thanks for the pride in the West Tonka community, the pride in our kids and wanting to display that. We, we're blessed in this community that private funding allowed for the hockey arena to be built at a time where we didn't have a second sheet of ice. And so, this was in early 2000s that it put in. You're right that there is a separate board that oversees the arena. Myself and our activities directors sit in on that board, as did a former board member here, the vacancy day box is on that as well. And so, I sit on that board and also understand the contract that we use as a school district. And I'd be happy to engage with you on questions or ideas of how we display pride in the place.
Yeah, I mean, I talked to some of the boosters, and right now, they don't do anything because they've never been allowed to hang anything up. But as a parent, and I know Kelly had a son and daughters that went through the program, and when you go to Delano, I mean, they've got every senior, both boys and girls, up on the wall for the entire season, celebrating the time, money, effort, everything that went in with these kids. And we do it for basketball, we see it for football. And I really think that with that building over there, we should have some say. That's all I'm looking for. And I'm not coming from the association, I'm coming from me, because I notice this stuff when we go around the state and play hockey, so.
I think, first of all, and I appreciate that clarification, we want to celebrate our kids, and if there are things that were shared that you can't do, then we definitely would want to review that. But I think I can engage with you in a way that we demonstrate the pride and also highlight our kids and their success and try to figure out a way that we can do that well.
All right. I appreciate it.
I just, a quick comment, too. I think they've gotten better. So I think when it first happened, or when this came about, they were just, I think they had so much pride in the building, you know, to just, to keep it clean and neat and perfect. And they've been getting better. But Bruce and Sharon just, I have one kid, and two kids, actually, that made it to state, and they gave them each a hundred-dollar gift card and a cool puck, and, you know, this whole wrapped up everything from Bruce and Sharon over there. So they've supported our kids really well when they do stuff, but I do agree, like, senior night, our stuff's just up and then it's gone.
Yeah.
You know, and so, I agree, hopefully, we could maybe, you know, do something more permanent, but I do know that they're good to the kids, which is...
Well, and I don't disagree with that. I mean, I know they have, they do a lot of things for the mites and things like that. But again, you go to, we went up to Buffalo, and the Mike kids have put together their own banners for each of their team, and it's up on the wall. And I know that if we brought that to them, they'd be like, "I don't think so." It just feels that way over there, so.
I love the idea of alumni and stuff, though, because I think that could be a cool area.
Because we've got professional hockey players, right? That are out there playing hockey. And I think that's pretty, pretty cool.
Yeah.
And to see, have the kids see that as they come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
I will move on to the Treasurers' Report.
And we'll start with an anonymous donor for West Tonka Wings, $100. Preferred One West Tonka Wellness, $2,903.98. Allen Farmer's Market, GMS Student Council, $200. Hockey Boosters, Boys Hockey Club for New Jerseys, $2,881. Soccer Boosters, Boys Soccer Club for new uniforms, $3,562.75. And Minnesota High School League Foundation Captain's Club, $1,422. American Online Giving Foundation Curriculum, $700. Mary Jackson, James Jackson Scholarship, $1,250. LPO Financial, Mary Esther Corr Scholarship, $1,000. MW Basketball Boosters, Larry Exel Scholarship, $1,000. Anonymous, MWHS, $20. Sharon Taylor, Student Senate Shelving, $3,000. Sharon Taylor, Student Senate, $2,000. Allison Briggs, Boys Tennis Club, $1,250. Allison Briggs, Girls Tennis Club, $1,250. MW Basketball Boosters, Captain's Club Basketball A.C. Balls, $2,000. American Online Giving Foundation, First Robotics, $1,320. Estonia Fundraiser, Grandview Middle School, $91.31. And Jim and Melissa Murphy for West Tonka Wings, $500. Number One Z, West Tonka Wings, $400. Shirley Hills PTA, Shirley Hills Book Bending Machine, $11,896.74. Trinity Lutheran Church Community Ed for Sponsor A Student, $1,000. American Online Giving Foundation, Community Education, $222.40. And finally, James T. Dolan, Community Ed for STEM Scholarship, $1,150. Due-to-date total contributions in cash, $1,137,296.32. There were no non-cash donations this month. And Mr. Chair and fellow board members, I've looked at the check ledger, and all seems to be in order.
Thanks a lot, Ralph.
Can I ask a quick question? Vending machine, Shirley Hills, what, I haven't...
That's a book-bending machine.
Yeah. I haven't seen that before. Brandon, you just started, and, okay. So will Hilltop have one, or anybody else?
Hilltop does have one.
They do?
Yeah, right in the open area, and it's very cool.
I gotta go see those, I have no idea. I'm like, "What?" Thank you.
And where do, where do those come from, the sponsors of those?
Well, the PTA at Shirley Hills, I'm not sure if from Hilltop, probably PTA or PTL, but the kids are excited.
Yeah, I'm sure.
They get the little coin to put it in the machine.
Right. Instead of popper candy, and now we got a book.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We'll move on to the Student Rep Report. Shonnie, you're up.
All right. I apologize ahead of time. It is a little bit of a longer report this evening. I just want to make sure I have all my bases covered and get every activity in. So, to start off, Student Senate has been very busy working towards hosting our annual Snowball Celebration from February 21st to the 25th. The semi-formal Sweethearts theme dance is being held in the Commons at the high school from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. on February 25th. Our Senate is also beginning preparations for the district-wide Stuff the Bus campaign to benefit the food shelf. The district will host this collection March 6th through the 10th. Future Medical Professionals Club leader Alana Andra recently stepped back from her position. Julian Cold and Sophia Jacobson were named as president and vice president, respectively. Letters of Love has had monthly meetings and last week sold crumble cookies during lunches at the high school, raising $330 to donate to Letters of Love Global. Students Against Destructive Decisions is meeting Wednesday and is looking forward to raising awareness about topics like teen dating violence and eating disorders. Environmental Club has been having bi-weekly meetings discussing a range of topics, including how Minute Soda is impacted by climate change. They are planning a field trip this spring. Fashion Club, Outdoor Endeavors, the Straight and Gay Alliance, Spanish Club, Gaming Club, Robotics, and Link Group unfortunately declined to comment this month, but each is active and meeting. In the arts, Concert Choir members have chosen pieces of classical music to utilize for solo and ensemble competition in April. Similarly, Concert Choir is looking forward to hosting and participating in large group contests on the 13th in the Performing Arts Center. Band is also hosting our district's large group contest and had their contest preview concert last week in the Performing Arts Center, to much applause from the community. The cast of The Play That Goes Wrong is in rehearsal preparing for their performances March 3rd, 4th, and 5th. The GMS Musical has also been in rehearsals for about a month and will perform April 13th through the 16th. West Tonka Community Theater will be doing an enrichment outreach via Children's Playhouse. Auditions will be March 2nd with performances March 10th and 11th. Students grades 2 through 12 are encouraged to participate. Mad Jazz has also begun learning their repertoire for coffeehouse jazz performances that will date place on May 12th and 13th. The speech team hosted their first tournament, The Odyssey, towards the end of January, as well as competing at Wayzetta. Notably, Connor Houston earned first place in the category of pros. This weekend, they also ventured to Duluth and were very successful there. In athletics, the White Hawks Wrestling Squad has had recent victories over Delano and Zimmerman. Freshman Mason Merritt placed second at ninth grade league regents and will participate in the ninth grade league state tourney. The White Hawks currently have five wrestlers in the state rankings at their respective weight class. Freshman Cooper Rowe, third; sophomore Cole Monster Tiger, eighth; junior Jack Nelson, first; and senior Sam Giuseggi, third. Girls wrestlers, Delaney Parker is ranked eighth. The White Hawks will host the Leopold Haglund Tourney next Friday, February 10th, and then will begin postseason competition. The wrestling cheerleaders have also blown everyone away at every match and tournament so far this season. On Saturday, they honored their seven cheerleading seniors, Helena, Rosie, Sophia, Kendall, Juliet, Trish, and Katie, along with four wrestling seniors, Sam, Luke, Rowe, and Terry at the home match against Hutchinson and New Prague. They can't wait to see what the rest of this season brings. Most notably, the Hockeys Dance Team has had a very successful season so far. In December, the team had four first-place finishes, including a historic first-place finish in Kick at the Eastview Invitational. This is a competition among all of the top teams in the state. And the Hockeys came out on top for the first time ever. In January, the team was named Wright County Conference Champions in both Jazz and Kick after two consecutive meets where they were placed first among all of the WCC teams. Six dancers received the honor of all conference. These dancers were Kendall Sichler, Hannah Hunter, Avery Rorig, Josie Moen, Sophia LaRukas, and Marissa Nelson. Also, the team had four dancers recently named to the Minnesota All-State Dance Team. Kendall Sichler and Hannah Hunter received All-State honors in Jazz, and Avery Rorig and Josie Moen received All-State honors in Kick. The biggest highlight of the season so far for the Hockeys was this past weekend. In our very own gym, the team earns its high scores of the season at the Section III AA Dance Team Tournament. They were named section champions in Kick and section runners-up in Jazz, earning entries to both for-state tournaments. They will compete at the Target Center in Jazz on Friday, February 17th, and on Saturday, February 18th. Having snow for the entire season has been the highlight of the Nordic Ski Team's winter season. There has also been a lot of great skiing and racing, with the girls finishing fourth and boys fifth in their last conference meet. The skiers will be racing in the section on February 6th at Highland Park. It's always very exciting for great competition. This is also a very young team with only one senior, so they will have almost an entire team back next year. Boys Swimming, Gymnastics, Alpine Skiing, Basketball, and Hockey also declined to comment this week, but are all having very successful seasons. And finally, in academics, Quarter Three and Semester Two began for students on Tuesday, January 24th at the high school. Students are settling into their new schedules and classes. Deca also had a very successful day at districts in the beginning of January, and 155 students qualified to participate in the state competition. Finally, National Honor Society held three very successful chapter projects, Semester One, which included roadside and campus cleanup, Pointcetta Scholarship fundraisers, and their Fall Blood Drive. Additionally, 115 junior and senior members have volunteered for over 930 hours so far this year in the community. The Executive Board recently toured weekend and are working to collaborate with this organization on future projects. Finally, the NHS will hold their Spring Blood Drive on March 13th and are opening this up to the community as well as students and staff. And that is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Kathy, we'll move on to the Financial Report, please. Oh, while you're getting that ready, were there any committee reports? Anybody have anything? I just wanted one, that on the Community Ed Advisory Council, and that, great turnout, great group of people, a lot of good ideas happening there, so it's really fun to see that group take off. It's going to a whole new level, so. All your...
Okay. All right, thank you. Good evening, board members, and happy Board Member Recognition Month. I just learned that today when I, an email popped up, said that we were, "We're the treats." We don't have a bunch for that, Kelly. We can't do that, the auditors will hunt me down. No gifts or treats. Treats, yes. All right. As long as I'm up here, I'm going to give my monthly standard business report before I take you through the revised budget. As of February 1st, our student enrollment here was 2,397 students. We had a drop in each of our buildings mainly because of a few families that moved that had multiple students, and so, again, we look forward to returning maybe some new students after the cold season is over and families will be moving back in. Expenses and receipts are, outside of the COVID funding, are tracking very well compared to the prior years. You can see we have our yellow revised budget that will be going, give you kind of a sneak peek on that, but we have collected $13,542,000, or 38.5% of our revised budget, and we have expended just slightly over half of our budget, so 50.1%, or $17,935,000. So again, we're pleased with how things are tracking. And with that, I will switch into the revised budget. Tonight, I'll be giving you the high points of the revised budget. This past June, you as a board approved a preliminary budget for the '22-'23 school year, and now that we're in the middle of the school year, a lot of the unknowns that we had assumptions for are known, and they're much more clear. The revised budget is based on updated information, current enrollment, and our current legislation. And I'd like to specifically thank our School Board Finance Committee for meeting this past Thursday morning. We went through this presentation, we'll go through it in a few minutes, but we spent a couple hours really diving into the details, and I appreciate their feedback as well as Superintendent Borg. The district enrollment is a key factor in our budget, the operating budget specifically. This slide shows a five-year history of our enrollment, and prior to COVID, we were accustomed to enrollment growth of 30 to 50 students per year. And like all, most schools statewide and nationwide, we had our enrollment trend disrupted as a result of the pandemic. The revised budget calls for five less students than we served last year. We look forward to restoring our enrollment trend in the coming school years. When going through our budget, we took a look at what we called for our adopted budget and where we were, and again, we are probably as close as we've ever been. Our current, our adopted budget enrollment was 2,408 students, and we synced it up to our December 2022, so we just edged it up five students. And then when we applied the weighting, it was just a couple students, so again, a very minor change in student counts and revenue for the revised budget. Just some quick highlights, we knew that we had 2% increased revenue on the basic general aid formula from the state of Minnesota. For each student, we received 6,863 students. Again, updating our enrollments and running our calculations, we updated all the state aid categories with our enrollment. We, I did mention that we have just a few less students than we had last year. On the state, allows districts 28% of the basic aid, so it's not a complete loss. We have just, because ours was so close, it's a small amount, but we did go ahead and record the declining enrollment aid that schools have. A new aid that we have is American Indian Education Aid. We didn't know that at the time of our adopted budget, the exact amount, so we implemented that in our revised budget, and I know Mark's been very active with that group. We recognized our lease levy, we have early recognition, and we spent quite a bit of time the last few years, more than ever, going through our federal revenues and really reconciling those, taking a look at any carryover dollars we had, as well as new COVID funding. And lastly, in the revised budget, we updated our local receipts. Again, those have been kind of up and down with in-person versus activities not happening, but we're happy that those are trending back to normal, so admissions, fees, we've made some modifications to the interest as a little higher, donations, and other miscellaneous receipts. I mentioned that we have been spending more time in the last few years on federal revenue, and this slide kind of gives you a glimpse of the planning that we've done. The top category is our standard funding, so that's year after year. We have Title I, Title II, Title IV, some special ed, and Carl Perkins. Not a lot of our budget is driven by federal typically, so you can see in a normal year, we receive about $700,000 in standard federal aid. When we received our revised calculations from the feds, we had a little more money in some of the categories, so we upped that by $45,000. And the most important part is the lower level, and again, this is an area that we take great pride in, we have been very thoughtful about the COVID funding. We've worked really hard to manage it well. And you can see, the first column shows what we received last year, so that's our audited data for last year. So you can see, there's a lot of zeros, a lot of the COVID funding is wrapping up, and again, we knew that, we planned for it, and have positioned ourselves well in that regard. There are a few categories that have, that we received later that have some carryover there, so you see they're labeled ARP, but that stands for American Rescue Plan. There's Learning Recovery as well as a few special ed categories. And there's just one COVID funding source that came up that we didn't know about, is we had an opportunity to apply for a COVID testing grant. There's, you know, just some lingering expenses that we have, and our nursing staff is busy, so we were able to gain that $58,000. So you can see, all of our federal funds now are under $1 million, so $935,000 in our revised budget. So I did attend a webinar this week, and I guess some schools, hopefully not a lot, but there's some schools that haven't tapped into all their funds, and if they don't use them, I understand they'll be thrown back in the hopper, and we may be eligible for some other funding, and I will be on the lookout for that. This last revenue slide shows our revenue by source, and you can see, on the left-hand side is our audit from last year. Again, the column on the right is our revised budget. And the biggest player is the state of Minnesota. We have 60-plus percent of our funding comes from the state, so we're very dependent on the state. The second category is property taxes, that makes up a third, or 30% of our budget, and federal revenue and local revenue are the remaining percentages. And you can see the federal is dipping down in this year. We talked about in the prior slide, we had almost $2 million, and now we're under $1 million, so we're kind of settling back into normalcy, too, with having the COVID funds not there. In addition to reviewing all the revenues, we also went through line by line with the expenditures when we revised our budget. At the time when the adopted budget is set, we had a lot of staffing yet to get hired, and so now, when we do the revised budget, we base all of our information on actual staff. We know who's teaching, we know who our peers are, we know their benefit levels, and this is really important. About 75% of our budget is staffing. We're a people-based business, we're here to help kids, and that takes people, so that's the biggest part of our budget. We take always a look at staffing contingencies, if something comes up, we make sure that those are held in place, lane changes for our licensed staff. We also always look at our utilities to make sure that they're adjusted accordingly. And our operating capital and long-term facility maintenance projects are updated, that's been very important. There's an action item later for a land purchase, and if you do act upon that, it is included and budgeted for in this revised budget. That didn't turn out. Let's see here.
We can go to the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Yeah. Kathy, we have, we have the download.
Yeah, that's okay. Mark is Google, he's moved it over to Google Slides, I apologize for that, but not a big deal, I'll just walk through. Anyway, what this graph would show you is an overview where we spend our dollars by program. And so, the biggest purple portion is regular instruction. Some of the other categories are vocational instruction, special education, instructional support, pupil support. A lot of our percentage by program of where we spend our money are really similar to the prior year, and this is an area, as a board, I feel you should be very proud of. I would feel like we do a fantastic job in the classroom, directly benefiting students. This slide gives a prior year history of the general fund, unassigned and assigned fund balance, and how it compares to our expenditures, and how it's syncing up with our fund balance goal. Again, this is, I feel, another area of pride, good stewardship, and fiscal responsibility. With the revised budget, we are planning on using $492,000 of the assigned fund balance that have been set aside for class size. We're able to provide continued student services without disruption at the current level due to the board's strategic plan and wise spending to utilize the class size reduction in special education. reduction in special education assigned funds. In the revised budget, we are projecting a pending fund balance of four million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, or thirteen point five-six percent of our expenditures. And that hits right in the middle of our fund balance. You can see the prior year was built up. And again, that was very intentional and very purposeful to make sure that we could get through the effects of the pandemic and make sure that our students were served to the best of our ability. In addition to the general fund, we have seven other, they're much smaller funds that we manage in our office. The first is student activity funds. That is our, the monies that we account for, that our kids are involved with for cool curricular, extracurricular. Some examples might be Wolfridge, DECA, Student Senate. And it's been really fun to see the restored activity. I think the budget when we were in the pandemic, it may have been a couple three thousand dollars. You can see it jumping up with their fundraising and spending those funds for their activities. The pandemic greatly benefited food service during, it was a difficult time, but the silver lining is there was, meals were provided to students at no charge. And so we had very high counts in terms of breakfast, lunch. The Westaka Foodies have done really well and continue to be very creative with student meals. We've also received, I think this is our third round of supply chain. I think the USDA understands that there's supply chain issues. And we've had some really nice grants that have been helpful with the, excuse me, the higher food costs and supply chain issues. And so during the time, again, it's been challenging, but they've really positioned a nice fund balance to, to set themselves up for future success as well as investments in updating equipment purchases. Community education is another active fund balance, our fund that's looking forward to rebuilding. They, I don't think that there's a fund that was hit harder by the virus with not having in-person events at the pack and WAC and early childhood. And our new community education director, Scott Lacta, and his team have done a fabulous job. They're working really hard at, again, resuming normalcy and working to a positive fund balance as well as growing it into the future. A couple other smaller funds, debt service. I always like to think of this as kind of your mortgage payment at your house. We account for our principal and interest for our refinance twenty-twelve bonds, our twenty-sixteen bonds for the WAC and PAC, and then our twenty-eighteen abatement bonds. The trust on the far right is where we account for scholarships for our students, as well as the Anne Bremmer donation and expenditures. And in my time at Westaka, this number's really grown too. It's, we've had some really nice scholarships. We also have some that are housed at the foundation and some are given directly by the donors. But the items that we account for are in this budget. The last two funds are internal service. Our internal service fund houses our self-insured health and dental insurance. The projections show that we should have a nice reserve growth into our fund balance. And our employee benefit committee meets monthly with our insurance advisor. These statistics and claims and revenue are watched very closely. So that has been really wonderful for our staff and very helpful for our budget. And the last fund is OPEB Trust Fund. OPEB Trust records our retiree insurance and implicit subsidy transactions. The bonds that are connected to this trust fund are paid off. That was closed out a few years ago. And so now it's investing and having the expenditures on hand. And I'd like to pause for just a moment and personally thank Ralph for his involvement with helping with investments to make sure that they're safely and wisely invested in maximizing our returns. Okay, so now, switching gears into the next year budget, the adopted budget, that will be our task over the next few months, is to create the adopted twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And the slide before you gives you, gives you a glimpse of our beginning assumptions. We're planning on two thousand three hundred and eighty-two students and a hundred and seventy kindergarteners. We have one of our larger classes graduating for seniors. And so again, it's not a surprise, we've known, we've planned, but we will, we will be graduating a group of over two hundred students. Again, we've had kindergarten roundup, but again, we're always hopeful this time of the year, but we always tend to lean on being conservative with our projections. Revenues, we are planning on four percent for the general ed aid, two percent for the categoricals. Clock in this budget also for next year and our assumptions is our operating referendum, which includes an inflation factor. And this will be the final year of step one. So in the twenty-four, twenty-five, we will move to step two, which will be very helpful. And in this budget also is our capital projects, capital projects levy, increased revenue. That's tied to our property values, which have grown. So again, that's very helpful for technology and those textbook supports for our students. And the other category that's been really helpful from getting a look at next year's budget is compensatory. And compensatory is really driven off of our free and reduce counts. And with our free and reduce counts and meals being charged again, those applications are coming in stronger than they have been. And so it reflects in the revenue that we receive. And we're very grateful for that. Salaries and expenditures, again, that's our largest part of our budget. Many of our groups are settled. Our faculty will be up this year, so we have estimates in, our late changes. We are planning on just one percent for health and dental because our, our claims are tracking really well. All other non-salary benefits are either two or three percent in this initial projection. Later on your agenda tonight, you'll have a, an action item for a budget goal. And it is our recommendation that that budget alignment or budget goal be one hundred thousand. Our financial planning model with our conservative numbers indicate a forecast of eight hundred and one thousand negative. We plan to use the assigned fund balances that have been earmarked specifically for this to keep our student services in place. There's a lot of hopeful items that are not included in this number, specifically legislative action. The state has a large surplus. We're really hopeful with general education aid, but mostly cross-subsidy. We have a great hope to close that gap, as well as universal meals. And there's many other legislative items on the table. Again, enrollment, we feel like we're very conservative on our enrollment forecasts. There's oftentimes retirements that come along between now and the spring that will be, there are savings, and so they'll be incorporated at a later date. And even if, if those items didn't happen, the budget goal recommendation that we're making to you this evening, it still fits within our fund balance policy of eight to eighteen percent. And before I open it up for questions, I just finally wanted to touch base on the budget calendar items that are coming up. Again, the adopted budget goals on the agenda. We have a very important administrative meeting where we talk about staffing for next school year on March sixth. We have a couple finance committee meetings that we'll be checking in with Ralph and Pastor Lauren and Brian. And then finally, we'll be coming on June second for the action item of the adopted budget. So with that, I open it up for questions, or Kevin, if you'd like to add anything that I missed, please feel free to.
Hey, I would just compliment Kathy and her team for how you have reported so accurately in a time of a lot of turbulence financially that institutions have gone through. You put us with good, good measurements of how we're doing, which has allowed us to plan. And so as, it really comes under my responsibility to present to you assumptions that we're using. We run those by our finance committee. I just have a lot of confidence in what Kathy and her team puts together, which is just a great blessing. You see that these next two years, we're using those assigned funds and that's, that was intentional. That's how we designed our budget to put those dollars during the pandemic in a dedicated account so that we can utilize them, so that we wouldn't have to make reductions which impacted class size or supports for students. We felt like that was the best way we could support learning loss, is to give stability to our kids, that we could continue with the program. That went to work if our community did not support us with that second step of the levy, because that buoys us. So we're covering, bridging it from where we are now to that second step. And we believe that will continue to push us forward. And so, really appreciative of Kathy and her team for the reporting, appreciative of the board for your decisions that you made during the pandemic that gave us these funds to bridge us to that second step. And really thankful for the community of approving that levy, because that gives us the funds we need to move forward. And so, there's definitely some changes that we've seen. I think there's a lot of stability in our overall direction.
I just wanted to comment, I'm, I'm so thankful and amazed. Every time you present, you talk about grants that you have found, or teachers will find grants, or if, if people don't use them, there'll be money back and I'll be on it. And you were amazing. So thank you, thank you for all your work.
I've got some good partners.
Very lucky to have you though, so.
Thank you. Speaking of partners, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
So for the T N L report, you'll have an action item in the consent agenda for the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee vote and resolution. And I thought before that, just to give the board just some context of what this committee, what the IPAC committee is, just as a reminder, per state statute, that anytime you have at least ten American Indian students in your school district, you're required to form this parent advisory. We have thirty-three students now this year. And just every year grows a little bit, a little bit. We're into our third year. And the, the state is very particular about who can participate. Anyone can participate in the committee, but to be actual members, you need to be an American Indian student, a parent of an American Indian student, or family members are of American Indian descent. It can be American Indian community members, American Indian district employees. Everyone else would be non-committee participants like myself. I know Gary has been to a few of our meetings. And it's really a great group of parents that are excited just to, I think, bring some cultural awareness for their children as they go through our school system. So the mission of, of the, of the committee is really to support American Indian students. Everything from educational supports to just learning about their cultural heritage as, as young students as they grow up. And then also, it's a place for American Indian families to give us feedback, to let us know what we're doing well, or ideas to enhance the educational experience for these, for these students. So with that, there are three goals this committee has, has created. And the number one is develop cultural awareness among the students. Sometimes students, the young ones, don't even realize they maybe have an American Indian background. And there's an effort right now where the committee is working on connecting students like Ed Hilton, but it truly hills with other students with the same background. And it, that's the type of thing that, that they're working on. And it just makes stronger connections between the families. And then, it's really, it's important to also provide families, it's all volunteer, opportunities if they want to participate in any kind of cultural heritage type field trips, programming that we do. And to give you just some ideas of what that is, you heard Kathy mention this, this allocation of American Indian aid. It's actually, it's a grant, and we have to write out an application, but it comes to about twenty-two thousand dollars. And, and what we're doing with that grant dollars is, for example, at Gramview, we partner with a group called McGeezy. And McGeezy is an organization that provides cultural-type activities for American Indian students in school systems across the Twin Cities. So McGeezy has an educational consultant, and her name is Terry. And Terry comes once a week, meets with our American Indian students. Again, it's voluntary, but the idea is to build community engagement, and she focuses on cultural activities. And that started back in October, that'll go through the end of the year. And that's for that group, those grant dollars, to pay for that type of, that type of thing. So it's been very well received. They average five to seven students a week. And then they rotate when they pull the kids out of class, so you don't miss the same class every week. But it's been a very well received and, and it's been a great addition to the program at Gramview. Other things that we've done, we've had two formal meetings this year. One was in September, we invited a, a member of a, of a tribe that shared his experience of growing up on the reservation and going to school and boarding school. And it was, it was really a very, very night to hear his story. And then in January, we just had an informal family meeting, great for families, just to get to know each other. Upcoming plans still this spring will be, we'd like to schedule a couple elementary school, after-school events. And then we're focusing currently on helping and working with our guidance department, talking about different scholarships, college opportunities, application supports for American Indian students. There's a lot of money out there on the table. If you have the right, you know, timelines and understand where to go to search out these funds, but we want to make that more apparent for these families that qualify for these dollars, let's use it. And then later this spring, we'll be doing some event planning with Orno's IPAC. And I think this is a really nice synergy between the two. So this leads me to the formal piece of this presentation, is that we have something called the resolution of concurrence or non-concurrence. It's, it's a lot of fancy words, but basically what this sums up is, state is very intentional that with the goals that the IPAC starts with, or states, we have discussion in January to talk about those goals, and in good faith, has the school district supported the group, has the school district provided educational opportunities for American Indian students. And there's a formal vote that was taken in January, and it's called a vote of concurrence or non-concurrence. And the vote was unanimous. We had the vote, the vote on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And so tonight on the consent agenda, you will see this statement, the board is asked to acknowledge and approve the attached resolution of concurrence, adopted by the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. So that'll be part of your consent agenda tonight to approve that, that resolution, that, that vote of concurrence. Then after tonight, the formal document then is sent to the Department of Ed, and we're, we're done for another year with that, that formal piece of, of this word. Any questions on, on that piece? Then the last thing I have tonight is that you'll see in the action item is a proposal for renewing and advancing our new twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five technology plan. And just to give you some very quick highlights about this new plan that's coming forward, we're going to continue in the same areas that we have in the past. And to give you the highlights of that, in the area of infrastructure, we are very blessed to have Corey Wolf as our IT director. He is on top of all of our networks, our servers, our computers, to make sure everything is working the way that it should. So in the area of infrastructure, he's on top of that. And we're going to continue, always continue that focus that everything is up to date, everything is working, because we all know when it's not working, we know that very quickly. The other area that we'll be focusing on and in greater emphasis will be technology security. So think about cybersecurity, think about malware, think about phishing emails that come through your email systems. Corey would say that we are ripe as school systems now to kind of be the next wave of areas that will be hacked, that will be attacked. And, and this is where we have put, thank you to the board, money and resources towards this. One highlight I would say about technology security One highlight I would say about technology security is that we have started this year what we call phishing campaigns. So we send out actual, I call them phishing emails to staff. And we talk about, and we look at the data, who's clicking on them? And then, and it's not to plug-atcha, but it's to learn and help staff understand the difference between authentic emails and ones that come into your work inbox that are not. And what's attached to that is educational videos, professional development to talk about this. And you know how this goes. After you click, you think, ah, I can't believe I did that. And we all do that. But it is important that this becomes kind of the next area of emphasis with staff, that we do formal training in this area. Because no one wants to have a problem, because when a problem happens, we know that it's just, the world stops to fix those things. The, the last couple areas, area of hardware, this is where we are constantly looking at the type of staff devices we use, the student devices we use, the projectors, smart boards that are in the classrooms, we're constantly looking for that right balance of finding the right devices to accelerate learning, but at a price point that's fair and reasonable. So that's hardware. And then the last piece is user experience. And in this area, this is where we want the end user experience to be as simple and easy as possible for students and for staff. And the, the best example I can give you is single sign-on. You can click one place and all the authentication happens for you as a teacher or as a student, so you can get to the tool that you need to get to. So we continue to look at this, we involve our tech committees in our buildings with these conversations, we have educational vendors that we work with, but it's always trying to anticipate what are the next things that are coming up. And you don't necessarily buy everything that's the newest shiny object, but we really analyze what are the needs of our students, what are the problems we're trying to solve, and what are the newest technology options to help fix those things or solve those problems. So this will be in the discussion item for you tonight, if you consider approving, and if so, then this will take us through twenty twenty-five.
Mark, I wanted to say thank you for all your hard work on this. This is, this was a great program. I had got to listen to this, to teach you American Indian committee report. And we really headed the right way.
Yeah, thank you. All right, that's my report.
So return it to you, Kevin. Yeah, so just a couple things, you have a number of action items, I'm going to talk about those, but before I get in it, we continue to review our facilities. And this has been a process that we have worked with our facilities committee since the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year, where we focused in on seven different areas of focus. Over the summer, we did a demographic study and also a community survey, trying to make sure that we are prioritizing our needs correctly, really landing in a place of looking at district-wide security, deferred maintenance, and redesign of education spaces, primarily talking about the, the high school. In that, we've worked with staff to get input, and the facilities committee did some prioritization of the input that they got. And I've started to go around to staff, different buildings, to talk about these priorities. And I'm pleased to share with the board that the staff, high school, middle school, both primaries, early learning, and other district staff are really in concurrence with where the facilities committee has directed this strongly. For those that we've asked for input after we present the areas of focus, and over ninety-five percent of our staff have agreed with the direction on maintenance, on security, that high school is the priority when we look at redesign, and even some of the activity spaces that we're focused on, just a high level of agreement. And on one hand, I can appreciate some people say, well, doesn't surprise me, staff is appreciative. But staff as a whole, if they had different feelings where the needs were, they would communicate that. And for them to really feel like this is being prioritized the right way, I think it really speaks loudly for the facility committee's efforts and where this is headed. We're in the process of, this next week, we'll meet with our joint parent advisory committee. I'll meet with another parent group later in the month. And then we have a community presentation on March fourteenth at seven P M. at the Performing Arts Center, where we will engrave, invite parents and the public, staff that would like to participate again. At each of these sessions, we ask for input, and so we send a form where people can give us that input. And we take all of that to heart, as we can put the best plan together for this community. The truth is, is some of our facilities have some needs, and it's important that we are communicating those to all, that it's on our radar, and our plans of how we can improve that. And right now, what I'm sharing today is that for our first stage of going through with staff, there's really strong alignment that they, they agree with what's being prioritized. In your agenda today, you have the budget, I commented a little bit about Kathy's oversight. Also, it really speaks to the assumptions that have been built in some of the planning, long-term planning that's put in place. It used to not be that way in this district. And it's really nice that you don't have to talk about that anymore. Things have really changed over the last fifteen to twenty years, where we have stability and we have systems in place, and we have good projections, and we have solid assumptions. We also are aware that things can change year to year, and we've prepared ourselves to handle some of that risk if it happens and how to correct. In saying that, though, one thing that's always made us strong is we challenge our budget at this time, because we know that budgets need to be evaluated, you just don't push them forward, you got to live within your budget, and you got to challenge expenses. You got to look at, is there other possibilities for revenue? And I think it's a culture that exists with our administration that everything is always on the table. And for us to grow and add things new, we got to challenge some of the past. So are there more efficient, better ways to do things, less costly for us to do it? And that's the process that we're in right now of how can we work with our budget? On your, in your agenda, you'll see not just the revised budget and the budget goal, but you'll also see a couple things relating to activities, a small increase for plays, a small increase for activity fees. And really, when we're looking at activity fees and plays, we don't look at purely offsetting. If so, we'd have to charge a lot more, but it's just keeping up with some of the inflationary increases that we've seen. We feel it's best to hit that gradually versus make sudden large adjustments. Another action item is to take action on the vacant seat that we communicated at the January board meeting. Dave Botts, after serving a long time on the school board, as we call it retired, after you do twenty years, you get to retire versus resign. And we are now in that process of going through our district process of filling this, and it's used by a number of districts around us. We have used this process twice over the years. And so the board will be taking action on the resolution of how we're handling the vacant and also the timeline. At ten P M. tonight, if the board approves this action item, the application will be approved and on our website, and people can start filling out that application. In the agenda, you see the timeline that it follows of when they have to apply by, and our process of overseeing that. Again, for this board, the process will be that the board, the clerk, the treasurer, look through the applications, they'll select finalists. At our March school board meeting, we will be looking through that process of whether you're reviewing applications, or if you'd like a selection process of a different process that that would be communicated and handled at that March school board meeting. The goal is at the end of the March school board meeting that you will have selected someone to fill that vacancy through, through December, beginning of January, where the elected person at this fall's election would start taking over at that point. Another action item is moving regular meetings from seven P M. to six P M., and that came up by the board, and Gary can speak to that, but we, if that's approved, we would be doing communication out to people so they know that change of time. Like we did this year, we're going to be closing off open enrollment for the Transition Plus program. The reason why is we have a full program, and we need to focus on the kids in this community versus start taking in open enrollment for that program. And then finally, the last action item is unique, in my time here, it's land acquisition. Huge compliments to Kelly, not only did your background serve us well in this whole process, but you saved the community a lot of money in that kind of representation. And I, I would share with the board that in this review, we did consult with an attorney just to make sure that all the Ts were crossed and Is were dotted as we're dealing with a government group, a school district, so on, to, a little bit different than one of Kelly's normal clients, and very complimentary of Kelly's work, and just speaks to the years of experience you have in this. So it's really nice to be able to be in this place where we have a neighboring owner that reached out to the district about the land that they were looking to put on the market and wanted to check our interest. And it was a property that we are interested in, as I think it'll serve us well in the future as we look at fields and parking primarily, and it's not just for that property, but really how it complements existing property on our campus. And so what you have before you is a purchase agreement that would authorize myself to sign up for the district through the rest of the, the closing documents. And really excited about this being available to the school. So again, thank you, Kelly, for your representation, and also thank you to the landowners for thinking of us as they started this process.
Thank you, Kevin. Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to discussion items. I think this is the largest of home to discussion items I've had since I've been on, down the school board. So chair moves for approval of action item seven A, approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three revised budget. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of resolution establishing a budget goal for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five district technology plan as was presented earlier. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item seven D, approval of a four-dollar increase in activity fees at the high school and middle school levels. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of action item seven E, approval of entering into a new cooperative Watertown mayor with, with Watertown mayor for boys lacrosse. One thing I like to say, when we've done these type of things in the past, they turned out to be very successful and, and everything. So I think it's a great, I think it'll happen for lacrosse. So all in favor?
Second.
Excuse me, good second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Chair moves approval of action item seven F, approval of new admission pricing for among the stock of spring play. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of resolution declaring a vacant school board seat. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of the process to fill vacant school board seat as presented. Little bit of discussion on that, Kevin, Kevin pretty much filled us in on it, and the timing, anybody else have any other questions on it? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of action item seven I, approval to change the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four regular school board meetings to six o'clock P M. I reached out to everybody on this, and everybody seemed good with it, and, you know, sort of the idea of number one, but one, I think if we moved it earlier, we might get a little more attendance, and also open up the opportunity after school events and stuff going on for people to be able to, to, to be at them. So, so can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll see everybody at six o'clock then.
Yeah. As long as the facility doesn't go to six A M., I'm okay. Keep an eye on that.
Some of us are slow to change.
Chair moves approval of action item seven J, approval of closing open enrollment in the Transition Plus program when the non-resident enrollment reaches one percent of the program's capacity. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair moves for approval of action item seven K, approval of February twenty-second School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We get treats. We get treats.
All right, get treats. Chair moves for approval of action item seven L, approval of resolution authorizing the superintendent to execute purchase agreement and closing documents for the purchase of the property of fifty-nine ten Game Farm Road in Minnetristo. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. Any further business, anybody? If not, chair moves for adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening, everybody. Drive safely.